Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, January 11th, 2021. We are starting today at 6:30 PM. If you will join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lisa.
Sorry, I don't have a bigger one.
Just feels better to see one when you're stating the pledge. Appreciate it.
So we don't have public comment listed on the agenda first, but I'm going to take some since I only have one. And I think it's relevant. It says the meeting is not live, sent from my iPhone. I have an indication on my screen that the meeting is indeed live. This email was sent at 6:36. We got started at 6:36. So I'm wondering if we didn't start just as this email was being sent. But Ian, I'd be grateful if you could double check and make sure we're live. And if not, do whatever we need to in order to get us live.
Commissioner, we are live right now on YouTube. Yes.
Perfect. Seeing no other public comment, I'll go to item two, Stormwater Funding Plan. Bill, Steve, take it away.
I will launch into this and then people dust off the projects. Give an update on what their status is as of today, picking up where we left off at the end of September. The last time we discussed this item specifically. So first of all, I do want to thank the board. I know in the last week, you guys, this will be your at least fourth meeting, given the technical glitches we had last Monday that bled into Tuesday. So I know you're meeting a lot and I do appreciate you taking some time tonight. I'm hoping that we can get through the content of what we're presenting in about an hour. I don't think we'll need much more time than that. And then obviously, we, to the extent we don't finish things up tonight, or if there's homework to go back and continue working on, we can get that and get going on it and bring it back to the board at the next opportunity. Where we left off at the end of September is we had presented, we gave a full presentation on a list of projects, known stormwater projects that have been on the books for some time, many of which have already been funded in terms of design. And we're at the point now where we can, with construction funding, we can start to go out to bid and actually get to a place where we're installing these projects. And again, I'll let Steve go into some of those details here in a minute. But where the discussion went at the end of September, if you'll recall, is I think there was general agreement on the projects and the implementation plan in those discussions. Where we, where there was pause was the discussion on the implementation of the plan and how it translated into adjustments to the fee to fund it. So the homework from the board back to us was, given the money that is in the fund, that has accumulated over the years in the stormwater fund, utilizing some of that to phase in any kind of fee adjustment that might be necessary from, that may be necessary as a result of the borrowing needed to do the project. So that's what we went back and worked on and we'll get into those details here in a little bit. And hopefully, we'll be at a place tonight. If there's any, like I said, any homework items or any items that the commissioners want us to go back and fine tune, we certainly can. Otherwise, we're hoping that we're getting closer to a point where we can memorialize the funding plan and then start to implement the next steps towards getting these projects in the ground. So that's, that's the goal. Again, we might get there tonight. If not, we'll certainly want to keep the conversation moving forward to try to get moving on as many of these projects as we can and as quickly as we can. So without further ado, Steve, if you wouldn't mind, let's jump into the project update.
Ian, if I could share my screen, please?
Whenever you're ready, Steve.
Okay. So do you guys see the first slide, Special Board of Commissioners meeting? All right, my computer's spinning around, so give me a sec. My screen froze up. Give it a sec. I guess the ball's going over my head. So everybody still sees the Special Board of Commissioners meeting screen slide?
Yep.
Steve, if need be, if the link that you provided me earlier today is still the correct one.
Mr. White's letter appear?
I can, I can try to launch it from my screen and I'll just tap through it as you go.
Let's see here, one more shot. No, my, my screen's frozen on all of them. I have, I have it up in three different formats and nothing is moving.
All right. So does everyone now see my?
Yep.
There we go. All right, Steve. I'll just give me the queue and I'll page through.
Thank you, Mr. White. So again, as Mr. White, the manager noted, really, a lot of this presentation is what we went through in September. This is the manager's letter to the board outlining a funding process where we could get a large volume of projects done. And this is the updated spreadsheet. This is the same spreadsheet you saw in September, but it is updated with new costs and we'll touch on these projects as you go, as we go. The biggest thing is the updated project estimates. As you can see, it's a hair over $16 million. So it's very aggressive, but these projects in an urbanized environment that we live in, in an urbanized suburb, are costly because we're working in areas that have already been developed, right? We're not out in the way out in the burbs where we have acres and acres of ground. Next slide, please. So this is something everybody's been talking about and I have to give some thanks to Meliora. I had asked them to dig up some information on a few things. And we've all been talking about how it seems like things have gotten worse. And this little graphic shows that. So if you remember, and I won't get deep again, but last meeting at the end, we talked about intensity. That's inches per hour versus the total amount of rain over a period of time. And it's the intensity which really causes our flooding. So if you get a very large amount of rain in a short, you know, one inch per hour, two inches per hour, that's where we get the flooding. So this shows that our state and the Northeast, the rainfall intensity increase in the past 50 years is 71%. That's huge. I mean, that is absolutely huge. So when people say, you know, it seems like it's worse, well, they're correct. Next slide, please, sir. This is what we touched on and I won't get into that last, at the last meeting. But just to show that the, on this graph, the red, the red representation is the 10-year, 1-hour storm. And the blue is the Christmas Eve storm. So it falls within, within the range of the projects we're looking at. Next slide, sir, please. So wanted to look at the flood reduction projects. These are the largest. These are the most costly. The South Wayne Municipal Lot, which is the Ithaca Creek Watershed, West Wayne Preserve, which is Little Derby Creek, and North Wayne, which is a Gulf Creek Watershed. Again, just to touch on what we spoke on last week, Meliora Design determined that the 10-year, 1-hour event is the most problematic, not saying it's the absolute worst, but it's the most frequent. So if you look on the right, North Wayne and West Wayne are being designed to that 10-year, 1-hour event. The South Wayne project is a little different. So we're trying to utilize the space we have. So we maximize the amount of storage and capacity in the South Wayne lot. Obviously, that's finite. It's the volume that we can get out of that lot and there's very poor soils in there. And also the other part of it is to get as much as we can get, much runoff as we can into the Radnor Middle School system. So this one is more like backing into what is the most we can do. And it's somewhat under a 10-year, 1-hour event. So the projects reduce, but do not eliminate, do not eliminate flooding for the noted event. Again, we mentioned this last week, we're talking inches of street flooding instead of feet. That's really the outcome of these projects. Next slide, sir. So we'll touch on each one. Again, this is pretty much the same slide we saw in September with some updates. This is the South Wayne Parking Lot System. So on the right, the right graphic is what we're going to do to that parking lot, which is basically use the entire parking lot. It'll be all underground. When you, when we are done, it will have better flow for traffic and parking. And we went through this with the police and they're on board, as well as more than one or two streetlights and appropriate plantings. And this did go through the Shade Tree Commission. The left picture is of the Radnor Middle School Field. So that's where we're capturing runoff as it comes down 30 and taking it over to the Radnor Middle School System. I noted previously, that's like money in the bank. We have unused capacity in that system. A system that costs a lot of money to create and build. So we need to take advantage of that. Next slide, sir. This is the West Wayne Preserve and Friends of the Radnor Trail Park Stormwater Management System. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned the estimated cost for the North Wayne system is, for the, could you go back one slide, sir? I didn't touch on the cost for, yeah, so the estimated cost for this all in is 3.25 million. And you'll see the funding Mr. White's come up with. Sorry about that. Next slide, sir. This is the West Wayne Preserve and Friends of the Radnor Trail Park. Estimated cost for this project is $2.6 million. Permits have been submitted or under review and are under review. We plan on bringing this before the Shade Tree Commission in February. Pending DEP approval, this could be bid in the next three months and could possibly be completed this year. So the idea is to use the West Wayne Preserve, which is what it was purchased for by the township some 20-odd years ago. I actually found a bid package that never went out to use this plot for stormwater management. So it's to use this for stormwater management, but also the area highlighted in blue is the Friends of the Radnor Trail. So in the area where some people call it the dog park or the dog area, large flat area, there would be a subsurface system there. And just as importantly, the stone slash gravel parking lot would become a porous paving parking lot. So as you know, in essence, we consider a stone parking lot to be impervious. So this now too would be able to manage the water that falls upon it. And also, I think everybody's aware of the flooding that occurs under the West Wayne Avenue Bridge. We would, as part of this project, we're going to capture some of that with inlets and pipe it into that system. Again, estimated cost of 2.6 million. Next slide, sir. The North Wayne Flood Reduction Gulf Creek Flood Plane Creation Project. The estimated cost is 4.6 million. Right now, we're working off of engineered concept plans, right? They're developed. The engineering construction plans are dependent on property owner participation. So at this point, we have about 60% of folks that are on board. But we all need to understand that, A, we need to get the other folks on board. And until we get these numbers of who is willing to do this, we really can't get to the true engineered construction plans. So the idea will be, we will run the model again based on everybody's participation. Because the fact exists that if, for some reason, a group or grouping of folks in the middle of the project did not wish to participate, that would definitely, we would have to determine if the project is still viable. So the graphic on the left just shows the drainage area, notes the drainage area. And that shaded yellow is the flood plain along Gulf Creek and that's basically where the project takes place. This is a little fun fact, if you will. So a 10-year, 1-hour storm event generates close to 50 million gallons of water of runoff. So if you were to envision a football field, end zone to end zone, 114 feet deep, that's the amount of water we're talking about. Now, the 1224 storm, the Christmas Eve storm, was close to 17 million gallons. That's that same football field, end zone to end zone, and it would be close to 40 feet deep. So these are the quantities we're talking about. So I think on the right side, the bottom bullet is the most important. Bid and completion dates are pending property owners' approval. So this project very much depends on who is going to participate and when we can get those approvals. Because again, it is still a concept plan. I know of no other entity in the area that's proposing to do a one-mile flood plane creation project. This will be in review by the regulatory agencies, DEP and Delaware County Conservation District. This is no small plan. So we're looking forward, we need resident buy-in. And once we get that and then we model it and we see that it's still effective, or if it's effective to a different amount, we go to the board. And then we have to look at doing the true engineering, the nuts and bolts, the big package. But it all is depending on our residents. Again, at $4.6 million estimated cost. Next slide, please. These are projects, I call them current infrastructure projects. So the Cumberland Place Storm sewer project was awarded by the Board of Commissioners. We're, at this point, we are just waiting for the contractor to submit his or her bonds. The estimated completion date is sometime in May. That cost there is the bid price plus inspections. The Arthur Road Storm Sewer Project, that's the one where there's ponding in the cul-de-sac on Arthur Road. It's problematic in the winter from an icy standpoint, as well as in the summer with airborne diseases. So mosquito-borne disease. It's a very straightforward project. That project is out to bid. We've received them and I'll be reviewing them and bringing them before the board in February for some type of action. The Wooton Road Storm Sewer Project is also out to bid. This is where we have a failed piece of infrastructure. The pipe just deteriorated over time. It's corrugated metal. It has a lifespan and it has surpassed that. And in one of those big storms, a tree fell over and ripped up a huge part of that. So basically, this project just dumps out in between two yards. And I call these current projects because these are the ones the manager was able to bring to the board to get to go to bid. And I thank you all for that. Next slide, please. The Baylen Road Culvert, this is one. Excuse me, the Baylen Road Culvert, that's one we've been working on a while. We have a conflict with a gas main and that's been taken some time to clear up. The estimated cost is $1.6 million. So we're getting really close with PICO for a plan that'll allow us to build this. There are time constraints, though. So we basically have the summer months to do this because they're going to cut and cap the gas line. And obviously, for good reason, they won't do that during winter heating months. So we're trying to resolve this with PICO as best we can, get this out to bid, assuming the board wants to fund it. Again, this is an infrastructure project. This is not a stormwater management or a flood reduction project. We're replacing a culvert that is made of two old, very pipes with a modern concrete box culvert, no larger, no smaller. We're hoping to bid in March. The Highview, Highview Road Outfall and Worcester Road Storm Sewer. Again, these are both infrastructure projects in very similar nature. The Highview Road Outfall Project, we have an outfall pipe that comes from an inlet on Highview, which has created a really large eroded itch on two properties. This pipe, this project would extend that pipe. We're working with the residents. They had some concerns with the original design, so we're going to address those concerns. We still anticipate bidding and construction in 2021 if funded by the board. Estimated cost 900,000. And the majority of those, a lot of those costs, I won't say the majority, but a large portion of those costs are due to the location of the pipe and the fact that we'd be having to go through driveways and remove sheds and other considerable items because we don't have an easement there. Worcester Road Storm Sewer, similar project. The Worcester Road Outfall dumps out on the front yards of two of our residents. It's, that too is eroding, not to this serious nature, but it's still problematic for those folks. So the residents have come back with some requests, which I'm currently evaluating for cost. And we, again, we could build this in 2021 if funded. Next slide, please. North Wayne Parking Lot and Tree Trenches. So I call these stormwater management projects. The North Wayne Parking Lot would be to take the existing parking lot. It doesn't take a lot of stormwater from the surrounding areas, but it is a large area of impervious surface right in the middle of Wayne. So the idea would be to create, use porous paving to manage the runoff from this parking lot. So if you can imagine the acres, a couple acres of site that that is, when we get a good rainstorm, that's all rolling down and this would address that. Now, just like the South Wayne project, the parking areas would be updated. The flow would be addressed, the flow of cars, that is, as well as the runoff, new lighting and landscaping. This cost is estimated at 2.1 million, but this is a true estimate because this project has not been funded for design or construction. So usually, as part of the design, one of the requirements I have in the design phase is that the engineering firm give us an estimated probable cost of construction. So this 2.1 million was gleaned off of what we've done with other projects to try to determine that. The Tree Trenches, this is another important project because it's been noted many times in the past. There is no golden bullet for stopping flooding in Wayne, in the North Wayne area, right? It will take several projects to keep reducing the flooding in the area. The, if we go back two years, Meliora did a presentation and we noticed the cost benefit of all these different projects. The Flood Plane Creation Project rose to the top, but that was never intended to be the sole project in this area. So the Tree Trenches, the really nice thing about these, this part of the project is they're really not noticed once you're done. It's underground and trees are planted on there. So we're doing a couple of good things, right? We're managing some runoff and we're planting trees. So it's a, it's a, it's a good project in that respect. And the intent was that the Tree Trenches would be on the Radnor Street in Willow area. And depending on funds, we just keep going. Next slide, sir. This is the last one. This is a little bit of history. And you know, we've spoken of how that area down by Willow is, was the natatorium way back in the day. So Meliora did some historical research and they could say, specifically left their slide on there to give them credit. But we did know, I mean, by observation, we could tell this. So what was a stream that ran by the middle school was enclosed in that culvert? And if you look on that first block of Midland there, right east of the school, there was a pond and a creek, right? That's what this, that's what's circled. That was a pond. So some of these were, some of these issues were created in the late 1800s. Like I said, we had the natatorium down by Willow and this, these are just two of the examples. So these interventions will help reduce flooding. But as one of the previous commissioners said, it has taken many, many, many years to get to this point. And it will take us years to get out of it, but what the manager has proposed, I feel, is a great plan in that we're addressing not just flood reduction projects, we're addressing infrastructure projects, as well as projects that are directly affecting our residents in the terms of the outfalls on the lawns. So I would turn it to the board if you have any questions for myself or Mr. White, the manager.
Steve, before we jump into questions, if it's all right, if I could just transition quickly into the funding side of it. So we get the full picture between the projects and how we intend it. And then we can, we can go through questions there if that's okay.
Sir.
Let me try this screen sharing again. Worked last time. So hopefully, everyone can see my Excel spreadsheet. The thumbs up because you're the only person I see. Can you see the, yeah, all right, good. So what we had presented last time was a static funding plan or concept through slides. So what we thought might be a little bit more, well, a little bit more interactive and hopefully explain how this is all working a little bit better is to show a live forecast or cash flow model. I'll start by going back to a slide that we presented in September is the primary fund allocation recommendation that goes into this. This, everything that we built in the cash flow model is based on this assumption here. So the current fee at $29 per unit generates roughly $1 million a year in revenue. What we're proposing is that we take that $1 million and allocate it into three buckets. We have a half million dollar bucket to pay for our smaller stormwater projects, a couple of those that Steve talked about. The proposal is, you know, projects, obviously, projects that are less than half a million. But if you recall, you know, some of those projects are, you know, 150, 200, $300,000. We might be able to do two or three of those per year on an ongoing basis. And this would be the allocation of funds to do that. Those would not require any kind of financing or interest expense. Those are basically pay-as-you-go using revenues generated from the $29 fee that we are currently receiving. The next bucket would be in, in consideration that the $29 fee was set by the commissioners back in 2013 that went into effect 2014, that a portion of that was for flood reduction, that we would allocate roughly 250,000 of that towards any debt service associated with the funding plan that we're presenting tonight. So basically, out of the $1 million, we're carving 250,000 out and allocating that towards debt service on the projects that we're proposing to fund now. And basically, what that does is it gives consideration that the fee has been generating revenue and will continue to generate revenue for the projects that we're presenting tonight. And then the last bucket is a $250,000 allocation to fund the design for future projects, to fund the annual administration of the billing and collection and the legal, the small, very, very small amount of legal charges we get or we incur as a result of issuing liens and collections and some of the administrative functions that go into billing and collecting. But a bulk of that will go towards either our new in-house engineer that the board approved as part of the budget this year, or if it's very specialized, some third-party engineering costs. But understanding that, under any circumstance, a portion of the $29 should, is going to be needed to fund future projects because there are many projects beyond what we're just looking to fund now. So with that in mind, with that allocation in mind, we developed a cash flow model. And what we had presented back in September was very similar to what you're looking at here, although we didn't present it in this kind of detail. There's, there's two primary sections of this. We have a stormwater fee input, what-if section up top. And then that flows into the stormwater cash flow model. The model itself is built, as you would expect, revenues minus expenses, ending, or ending cash. The important elements of this is that we've identified the projects that Steve just stepped through. The one project that we're working on that's not in the presentation was the Robin Hood Project. As the board's aware, that's an emergency project from the storm midsummer. That is moving forward as approved by the board. The cost is roughly 850,000. As the board's aware, we were awarded a half million dollar grant. That half million dollars is recognized up here in the revenue. Everything else is as Steve presented and is identified here in either 2021 or 2022. And as also, these are all the projects that are less than a half million dollars. So we would use current cash. Uh, and as also, these are all the projects that are less than a half million dollars. Uh, so we would use current cash. In the fund to um, install these projects. Uh, and then outside of 2022, when we get in 23 and beyond, we just have the half million dollar allocation and the board at the time. Will allocate. Uh, will I assign those dollars to projects on, on an annual basis or a, a, a biannual basis, however the board wants to do it. Um, and then we get into the next section with the finance projects. These are the ones that are greater than a half, half million dollars. Um. Much greater in most cases and will require some uh, some financing. To install. There's just, there's not enough cash in the fund. And so it'll require some level of financing to, to generate the, the cash needed to install these projects. And then to accommodate that or to account for the, the financing, we have. Uh, a debt service line item at the bottom. As we discussed back in September, what we're proposing is a, a bank loan method of financing. Where we have access to the full amount, but we only draw down on the amounts as needed. Uh, as the projects are awarded. Uh, and we are actually paying the contractors the money. So that will help. Uh, lessen the interest expense while the uh, projects are being installed. And then ultimately we're forecasting that in 2024, the bank loan would be um. Refinanced into a, a, a typical general obligation bond, 30-year fixed rate. Uh, debt instrument. Uh, and that's, that's what the 643 500 represents. Um, so let me can, let me collapse the specific projects. So this shows a little bit better on the screen. Um, so the, as I mentioned at the start of the meeting, the, the, the big hangup. And the discussion last time was what? Needed to happen to the fee in order to generate the revenue to pay for the debt on the projects. And since we are going into 2021 with uh, just shy of $3 million in the fund. Um, the board had asked, is there a way to smooth out, delay, smooth out or a combination of both, any kind of fee adjustments? Uh, utilizing some of the cash in the fund to buy us the time. To before fee increases might be necessary. So. Uh. That's what we've done here. And what you can see um. Is that? In 2021, two and three, um. We're spending cash down uh, primarily in 2022. Uh, because we're allocating a significant portion of the cash that's in the fund now towards. Um, these larger projects, roughly a million and a half to be exact. Um, then in 2023, we, we kind of left things alone anticipating that some of the projects, um. You know, it's. They're not going to fall very precisely within the calendar months. So we're anticipating 2023 to be a, a cleanup year in terms of finalizing the installation of the projects awarded in 21 and 22. Uh, before 2024, when we would issue the long-term bonds. So what we're proposing or recommending at, as part of this plan. Is a phased-in approach um. For a fee increase, uh, the number of billing units, I'm all the way back at the top of the spreadsheet now. So the number of billing units we have uh, is. 37,303. So. The, the break even point. For the overspending or the increased expense over the 1 million that the, the current rate generates is $8. Um, so instead of. Uh, just putting that whole $8 in as a one-time fee increase in 2024. Uh, we built into this model, uh, a $2 per year increase over a four-year period. And what that does is. As you could see, uh, the amount of deficit spending. In 24, 25 and 26 is reducing each year as the fee is going up. From 29 to 31 to 33 to 35, and then ultimately in 2027. Uh, at a $37 per unit rate, uh, the, the activity is back to break even. At the same time, uh, we are reducing the cash in the fund from what we're starting 21 out with, with. Uh, just to shade over 2.7 or 2.8 million. It's working that balance down. To roughly 675,000. Um, again, utilizing that cash to install projects. And to smooth out um, the fee increase that would be needed to ultimately balance the fund. As a result of the debt service. Um, so. What's uh, what we can do here? And again, this, this is not static. It, it is dynamic. So if, if we wanted to, for example. Take a quick look just to prove out that the $8 is the break even. If we did that entire increase in 2024. Oops, we can see that. Uh, instead of having a deficit amount in 2024, we're now basically at break even or slightly above. Uh, but we're also carrying instead of, you know, $600,000, we're back at 1.1 million. So. Um, that's when we went back and reworked uh, at the request of the board from the meeting in September. Um, again, we can. We can. We can move these numbers around uh, as we see fit. Ultimately, the goal being that. A, we keep some amount of cash in the fund for uh, say the, the emergency project, the culvert that collapses on us, something. Uh, like a Roberts Road that we had to do in 2020 there. That, you know, it was a, a, a basic inspection that was turned into a, we, we got to do this right away type of project. So. Having some amount of cash in the fund is necessary just in case those do pop up. Uh, since we are allocating all of the other dollars that were previously used for the, or generated under the million dollar revenue. Towards specific projects. Um, and then ultimately we want to balance the fund so that there's enough revenues to cover expenses. Um, because as we are aware. Uh, what we're proposing in terms of project load now. Uh, is about $15 million off of a project list that's in the ballpark of 15 million. Uh, so there's still another $35 million in identified projects going forward. Um, so we don't want to exhaust the fun of all cash, uh, or put it in such a position that. If we were to do a second round of this, say in seven or eight years, that. We're having to adjust the fee. Even more dramatically to cover the decisions we're making now and what's needed in the future. Um. So as, uh, and the other nice thing about uh, the stormwater revenue uh, and our expenses is that. Over time, these are, these are predictable. Um, the revenue has been very reliable through the years. Um, even recently, uh, 2020 revenue was right on the $1 million mark. Um, so it has proven to be um, reliable regardless of economic situations. Uh, so this is a forecast that I, I think it carries a lot more confidence than say something that comes out of the general fund. Uh, where the revenues are much, much more um. Sensitive. And on the expense side, these are projects for the most part that we have a lot of control over. Uh, we can plan for these as we're doing now. Um. And then. Leave a little bit in the bank for those that, that creep up on us, but we're always in a position where we can adjust. Um, and I'll go back to the example of the Roberts Road Culvert where. It's not something that we're necessarily anticipating today, but tomorrow it becomes a priority. So uh, we can, we could take a half million in one year and say, all right, well, that needs to go to our emergency project and we'll have to hold on one of the, whatever projects were previously identified for that. So. Um, this is a, a, a cash flow model of, that we can. I think we can look at with a higher level of confidence than we can with most of our other operating ones. Uh, and plan accordingly. And the nice thing too with this is that while. Uh, it is a plan that spans over a long term, longer than individual commissioner terms. Uh, there's nothing here that would bind future boards. Uh, but it does lay a ground, you know, a roadmap for any new commissioners that come aboard. That, you know, there, there is a plan in place and then we can always adjust as needed through, you know, based on new boards and what direction they want to go. Um, so with that, uh, let's, uh, if we could, this would be a good time to turn it over and, and hear what your thoughts are and, you know, what questions you have and what we can answer.
What is the next step that you are looking for from us?
So the next step would be um, some sort of consensus from the board to memorialize the plan, uh, probably in resolution form. That just identifies the key triggers um, in terms of, you know, the finance, the projects, the financing. And what that means down the road to future rates. Um. And then uh, at the same time, we would start bringing to the board legislation or uh, requests to go out to bid the projects that are designed and ready to go. As well as get the ball rolling on the financing end. And that can have, again, that, that can happen as quickly or as, uh, you know, at whatever pace the board feels comfortable with. But we're, we're ready to, to, to do whatever direction you want to provide.
So I'm going to request that we get a resolution in front of us as quickly as possible, maybe as soon as the next meeting. Um. I completely understand and value having informational meetings like this one. I do feel like there's a lot of legitimate concern by residents that we spend a lot of time doing. Informational presentations and investigations and that kind of thing. So. While this has value, I very much want to also then couple it with an action item at the next meeting where we will debate and vote one way or the other. And thank you. I should have led with that.
Um, so I, 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 I would disagree. Kind of think that's putting the, the, the cart in front of the horse here. Uh, because there are questions that need to be asked. Um. By other commissioners other than let's just say, uh. Put it in resolution. We'll talk about it at the next meeting. I think we should talk about it here. I think we should go through the fine points here. That's why we're here. Um, so. Uh, you know, we're, it's a question and answer session and the initial knee-jerk reaction is just put it in resolution so we can vote on it. I have some questions. Um, and some concerns. So my first concern. Uh, and, and I stopped counting at around what? 17 million, Bill? 17.1 uh, uh, million? Is that what uh, these total projects come to?
Uh, we are at. A little over 15 million.
Okay, a little over 15.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's the finance. So yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. Yes. So we're, yes.
About, okay.
16 million.
Okay, um. So I, I, I will tell you this, um. To. Raise uh. The stormwater fee approximately 29.4% over the next four years. When this board uh, didn't want to cut funding. Um, in December. Uh, is, is, is a big concern to me. Um. You know, I, I don't think we have our finances. In line. Uh, for us to just um, throw money at this. This stuff should be prioritized. Maybe it's all important. I'm sure it is all important. Um. But I think it should be prioritized. Um. The other thing too is I think we need, again, I, I've talked about it before. Um. But we need uh, uh, outside entities um, to look into it because this is. One more um, huge bond. Uh, or line of credit, what you have that's going to put the township. Uh, I don't want to say more at risk, but. This is again unsustainable. So. Uh, I talk about a pilot. I think it's important. Um. You know, there's a 38,000 square feet addition. Uh, these entities that want to, at Villanova University, these entities that want to build. Um. You know, need to. Realize that there's a, a longer plan and, and, and. But that's kind of all our fault. Um, so I, I guess I'll, I'll say this. So for me to be in favor for this. Um, I, I, I see the importance, but I, I really can't vote for this. Uh, in the extent of put it in resolution, let's vote for it at the next meeting without. A comprehensive plan that deals with uh, institutional growth that deals with our stormwater waivers. And all of this, um, we're doing this to ourself. Um, so I, I can't vote for it unless we address stormwater issues with. Uh, ordinances, not just throw money at it and we need to quell growth. Um, to, uh, to really quell growth and. To have a, you know, um, intelligent designs of not, hey, let's put a rain garden in or a stormwater barrel. That's not getting the job done. Um, so. I, I could be convinced otherwise, but I, I, I'm just looking at these, these numbers and um, you're asking the, you're asking to burden the. Taxp- I should say fee payers. There's no long-term comprehensive plan. And this is going to be uh. Uh, quite expensive. And then we haven't. Even decided. You know, what's the cause of this? The cause is rain, but. What are the other factors and, and, and how long? I mean, what's the physical lifespan of each project? How long are the culverts going to last? But also. What are the? What are the uh, the lifespan of a project if, you know? Um, if there's more flooding in TE or Laura Marion or something else. So again, I just. Think that we're looking at this um, too directly, and I think that we need to. Look at this with all other things, uh, there, or all other. Things aren't the, but, but a better word, but all other factors uh, and variables. So. That's what I have to say, but without a comprehend, if this is not going to be. With a comprehensive plan done in conjunction with a comprehensive plan, I have a, a difficult time. Um. Voting to spend, uh, you know, 17 million in, in, in bond money plus raising people's rates, uh, 30%. Thanks.
Well, didn't you say seven? So I, I agree. So what's the, what's the amount of financing proceeds? So it's 13 million in two separate tranches?
No, it's um, let's call it seven and a half million in two tranches for a total of 15, little over 15 million.
And the only, the, the issue I have with it is we have a hard time spending this money. Between regular delays from construction, from. Administrative and also from regulatory approvals, et cetera. We, we put the money in upfront. We still have money left over in our construction fund from, from past bond issues. On several projects from the 15 and 16. I, I, I think it's in, I think. The plan is fine. There's nothing wrong with the plan as far as you laid it out here. It's well done. But can you really get it done is what the issue is? And we, we borrow this money and um. You know, I'm worried that we won't be, won't be able to spend it and that's my main concern. And also I think that, that Sean is right. We need to really look at it in the context of our land use and our, our development. We continue to approve every, we have all these big developments coming in. And, and, and. This is just, this is really addressing the current problems we have, not even looking forward for all of the construction that is planned. So it's really a serious concern. We ought to consider a moratorium on construction until we can get our hands. If this isn't really necessary, 15 million, we, we really need to consider. Not just the revamping of the stormwater ordinance, which is going to take a lot of time, but. And, and it'll be a, a, be a, a big, it'll be an argument over exactly what to do, but really the building. And, and understanding the impact that that's having. So. I, I agree with Sean in, in that regard. And then I'm looking for you guys to say, oh, Rich, there's no chance. We're going to get all this money spent and worry about it. But there's no, no hope that we won't, we won't have this all. So can you give me some assurance in that regard?
Well, I, you know, I'll, I'll sound like Steve a little bit in that these stormwater projects won't guarantee funding or guarantee let, uh, complete stop of flooding. I can't sit here and guarantee that we'll get all these projects done, but. Uh, we considered that in how we were going to proceed with the financing or recommend the financing, and that's why we went. Uh, that was one of the primary reasons why we decided the bank loan was better. Uh, if there are delays, say from, you know, DEP for example, and getting permitting approvals. Um, we're only drawing down and paying interest and financing charges on the money we actual draw, actually draw down. And we're only doing that when projects are awarded. Um, so there is, we are insulated a little bit from those type of delays with this, with this uh, method of financing. All versus uh, going out and borrowing $15 million today. And then just trying and hoping that we get the projects installed quickly. So.
All right. So this is really an else, this is really LCs you're planning, I guess, like we did for the. For the sewer, the initial sewer.
The sanitary sewer. Yes, sir.
So, all right. Well, that makes a difference then. Um, and if we don't draw it, then. You know, you might end up with extending these because I, I, I'm, my sense of is even 2022. You know, you, this is probably going to be financing in 2023 is my guess.
The commissioner.
A por- a portion of it, a portion of it, I mean.
Yep. To your point on completing the projects, um, you know, follow the manager said, we have all. We anticipate moving forward as quickly as possible. We anticipate moving forward as quickly as possible. But uh, let's take North Wayne, for instance. So. As long as it takes to get the resident buy-in. Really nothing of nuts and bolts is going to occur and that's, that's one of the huge factors. Uh, let's take Mail and Road. Remember I told you we have a very short window that Pico will let us. Work this project with the gas main cap. If we don't receive funding or authorization for that project to go through for several months. That's an automatic push back to twenty twenty-two. So there are.
I need one second, Steve, sorry.
Pardon me?
I need one second. Hold on, I'll be right back.
Okay, um, does anybody else have any questions that we can circle back to this?
I had a question if no one else does. Okay. Bill, can you just do me a favor? Can you expand again on those finance projects greater than five hundred thousand dollars to see all that that's there?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so. You know, I. So I think you guys have done a great job and you know, so many of these projects we've been talking about at the very least. For three years since I've been on the board. So, and I know that some of them longer than that. Um, and I think that it is important that we do figure out for once and for all a way to find them. And get some projects, some of these projects. You know, uh, moving. So. But I, you know, I am concerned that it does. It, it does seem like a lot in those two years. Um, and I'm wondering if we are, and you know, I, I have to agree with Commissioner Booker, like are we? You know. Planning for more than we can actually accomplish because it does tend to seem now. To your point, Mr. Nocini, that you were just making to Commissioner Booker about some of the projects where we need the funding in order to make them go. I'm wondering if there's a way like, do we prioritize some of these and? Maybe at least push some of these into twenty twenty-three. So like ones that we already have engineer, you know, engineering done for things that are already kind of. Almost shovel ready as I guess you guys like to say. Or even, you know, to the point really close with the permitting and things like that. And then maybe pull out some of the ones that maybe aren't necessarily quite there and move those to twenty twenty-three. You know, it, it, it. It does seem like a lot and it, like I just, you know, I, I would want to make sure that, you know, if we are going to, to do this and then start to initiate. You know, an increase on the stormwater fund that we have these projects moving so that people can see that their money is being spent. Because that is one of the biggest concerns and I know it's not true, but you know, there is definitely the perception out there that people are being. Paying the stormwater fee and the money is not getting used. And I know that's a hundred percent true and I work very hard to try to make sure that that narrative. Is, you know, to dispel that myth because it's definitely a myth. So that would be my one question with this. And then, you know, to Commissioner Farhi's point, um, and even Commissioner Booker's. I know that we're going to be undertaking the stormwater ordinance. Looking at that and making some changes. Or revamping it. I'm not sure what you have in mind around that, Mr. Nocini. There's definitely, if we're going to increase the fund, the stormwater fund, I would like to see. When we do that ordinance, and I think I've mentioned this before, that there are um. That we figure out a way to give people rebates for, you know, removing impervious and that is definitely something. That has been mentioned to me on occasion by uh, residents, you know, people who. Take out swimming pools and big patios and things like that or replace it with grass. You know, how can we, you know, is there any way to do that? So. And you don't have to answer that now. I know that's something for later. So. Um, I'd like to be able to kind of temper that in a way. So I guess those are my initial things. I have no problems with any of the projects. I think the projects are all really needed. And you know, would be supportive of that. That's, those are my, you know, just initial reactions to the funding, but I appreciate that you went back. And thought of a way to kind of smooth it out. You know, and to make it a little more uh, palatable, but. If we want these things done and we have people that are really hurting in the flooding. You know, we can put up all the floodgates we want or all the signage or things like that. We really need to make some investment. To make a change. So I, I just. Thank you guys very much.
Commissioner, just to, if I could just jump in. So these projects were based on, if, if. The manager was able to get us. Uh, the funding from the board for the three projects that are out to bid right now. Uh, those projects sat for two years, you know, awaiting funding. So just to go back to what I said. If, you know, for whatever reasons, as the board reviews this and dives into this. If we pass a certain point on the Mail and Road Bridge. That's an automatic kick out to twenty twenty-two, right? Uh, similarly, the North Wayne Flood Plane Creation Project. That could move quickly. Or that could, as it has now, we actually sent letters out to the remaining folks. To say, we want to meet with you and go over that. We've got a trickle of responses back. So. If we go months and months trying to contact those folks. And then at one point we have to go to an actual easement agreement as opposed to, yes, we're interested, we'd like to do this. We need to go to an actual easement. Uh, to get easements from sixty or seventy residents, that can take time. So the North Wayne Flood Plane Creation Project could get pushed out quite a bit. So I gave the manager. What I hoped was if, if everything clicks, so to speak. That, you know, this is how we move. And to Commissioner Farhi's point, I guess it was last, maybe it was two thousand and nineteen. We did provide a, a weighted list, if you will. Uh, a recommendation of projects. Ranked based on certain criteria. We provided the criteria as well as the list to the board of commissioners. And lastly, I'll just.
Can we get that, Steve? Sorry. Do you mind recirculating that again?
Yes, sir. We will definitely do.
Thanks.
And uh, just what, to touch back what I talked about at the last meeting, I know it was late. It was like quarter of eleven. The stormwater ordinance, our current stormwater ordinance is by no means a stringent stormwater ordinance, right? Surrounding communities have more stringent stormwater ordinances. But. They also can do it in a different way. And as Commissioner Borowski said, there's a lot of nuances about. Removal of things and making it a little easier for folks. But you might remember I said it and Commissioner Booker touched on it. The zoning is your land use ordinance. That's what. Tells what could be built on a property and what the density of what can be built on the property. So we have a lot of, you know, we have several thousand parcels, eight thousand parcels existing now in the township. That have already been built. But to move forward. The stormwater management ordinance, whether it be our current ordinance, which I, I think. Most definitely needs to be rewritten, not just amended. Those are reactive to a point. If a project gets approved, the stormwater management says, based on your impervious surface or based on this, here's what you have to do. It doesn't limit what you can do. It just says, these are the requirements. Now, if you can't fit it on your property, in essence, it might. But it's your zoning ordinance is your land use ordinance. That says how many homes you can build. On a parcel that is X. Square feet or so many acres. So. If we do redo the stormwater ordinance, which we're required to by DEP. We'll address new construction more stringently, I hope. That would be my recommendation. And in different methods. But that's not going to take away the density you have under your current zoning regulations.
So I think, yeah, you and I have reached out to you, you know, I do want to have that discussion around zoning uh, around some of the properties. We do have some. In a proactive way. Before, because we do know some things that I think are going to come forward. So. I think that's a discussion we should definitely move forward as well.
Yeah, and then um, just really quickly, I'll, I'll, I want to touch on the. Two things. First of all, the prioritization of the projects that are being presented in this plan. And I think, oh, Steve did touch on it, but I'll just echo that. While they scored high, a- as you'll see when we redistribute the um. The total spreadsheet, these are also ones that the board prioritized by authorizing to go out to design. Uh, so the, you know, it, the. You know, based on board action, these projects were the ones that, that rose to the top. Uh, and there are why, that's why these are included in the funding plan now. In terms of the, you know, the aggressiveness of the projects and the timing. You know, that's, I mean, we share the same concerns, um, you know, given the size of, of staff and just, just how many. Falls Steve can juggle at one time. But that's why the bank loan method of financing uh, makes the most sense. Because if we do run into delays and if there are legitimate reasons why projects are delayed. All, will, what that will do, well, it'll push this entire plan out. By whatever, you know, unit of time is necessary. So if twenty-three becomes twenty-four. Then so be it. Twenty-four becomes twenty-five. It just delays. Uh, when the ultimate financing is, is bonded out and at which time fee increases would need to be considered. So right now I think we're looking at the. What would? What would be considered the most aggressive? It would. It would only lessen from here or only lengthen from here. Uh, to where those fee increases wouldn't be necessary until um. Maybe not twenty-four, but twenty-five or, or twenty-six. But. Uh, circling back to the discussion point, like. The idea here is to install. Stormwater management projects um, and to get going on some of these ones that have been designed, they've been on the books for years. And it's to actually move and install those. And these improvements, not dissimilarly from a sanitary sewer project, these improvements would be paid for through. The fee that was established to manage the system. Uh, so though the fee paying base includes all properties in Radnor regardless of um, any kind of exemption someone might have on the real attack, real estate tax side. So. You know, even those that are more developed than others. In fact. Um, you know, based on the way the fee is structured, you have, and again, I, I, this is not necessarily for the board, but maybe the, the public is not aware is that. The fee is based on two broad categories. We have a residential category. And then we have another, the other developed product, uh, properties category. Residential is as it, just as you would imagine, it's all the single family residential houses in Radnor. Those are built, those are broken down between uh, one of four different sizes. Based on lot size. So you either pay one unit, two units, three units or four. So the maximum amount of a, a residential property in Radnor is paying is, is four times the unit. Uh, the other developed properties, that was um, you know, those are engineered. Uh, calculated impervious areas. Uh, and they're paying whatever the, the, the unit is or the number of units based on impervious area times the, the unit cost. So. Um, again, it, the, the more. Impervious a property has, uh, the greater share of the fee that they're paying. So. Yeah, this unadopted uh, was meant to be somewhat. I'll use the word self-sufficient. That, that may be a little bit too stringent, but it was meant to be. A, a fee established to manage stormwater. Uh, from all the different elements, from replacing current infrastructure to managing the MS four to falling flood reduction. That's what we're um. Yeah. All the properties pay for this. And so they would, you know, tho- everyone would be sharing in the cost of, you know, these improvements and then i- in perpetuity. Uh, we, there's, there's no plan that we could adopt today. That would encompass all of the projects that are identified. That goes with all of our capital projects. Just over time on an ongoing basis, we're reviewing those prioritizing and funding them. This case, we have a funding mechanism. Uh, which allows this prod, this conversation to move faster than, say. Our general capital, um, which includes all the townships, facilities and. Uh, you know, parks or trail systems and all those things that need improvements too. The funding sources aren't there to have that discussion yet, but this one is a little different, which is why um. We're able to, to advance this conversation. And I should say. At the same time, as Steve noted, the ordinance rewrite uh, will be in front of the board and that'll be occurring this year as well.
Just for clarity, Bill. So the stormwater fee can only be used on stormwater projects. So this doesn't impact. Any other, like, we couldn't take this money and move it for something else. So we would have to use this money for stormwater projects. So we might as well use it for stormwater projects, right?
That is, that is absolutely correct. So the, the money generated through the fee can only be used for stormwater. At the risk of complicating the conversation, that doesn't, the board could identify general sources of money to help fund stormwater as well. But in no way, shape or form could we use money from the stormwater fund to buy. You know, a, a new car or. Uh, you know, new furniture or, or some major project somewhere else in the township.
Yeah, it's a fun capital or something like that. We couldn't do that.
It's got to be stormwater. And the, the, the ordinance that established the fee is, is crystal clear on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a cou- just a follow-up from before, a couple of things. Number one, that North Wayne project, Steve, you pointed out is right. I have, I have information from nineteen seventy-five where they were trying to do the same project. So that, that one has been on the books a long time and the concept has been out there. So it might be many years before this actually gets underway. So we need. To consider the funding. The funding, it's fine with this bank, bank loan. It could end up costing more if interest rates go up over time. Instead of getting the money upfront, but I, I think that's what we need to do. And also Bill. And Bob, you gotta use all of the stormwater money that we have in place as soon as possible and upfront. I disagree with Lisa. It's not a myth. We don't, we collect this money. We've been. Saving it. We use it for projects that we can. But we haven't been, have done a good job of clearing out that fund. So we, if we're going to take that money from the taxpayers, we have to use that first. So I'm going to make that a priority to use that money first as well. So those, those are my only follow-ups. Thanks.
Can I just ask, when was this fund initiated?
Two thousand fourteen was the first year we collected.
So that's six years ago? Am I right? Six? Okay. And it throws off about a million a year? And how much do we have in there right now? Twenty-seven, five, two point five, two point seven?
Two point seven, over three mil- about three million. It was more than that in the past.
Okay, so we've. Been spending the money, Rich. Part of the problem is we can't agree on the projects.
I would say. Prior. I would say we haven't been spending the money. If we're spending the money, it should be empty. And we could agree a lot quicker.
To that, to that. Point, though, I mean, just when you take a look at the, the, the amount, the cost that some of these projects carry. It's one project. So, um, you know, if we did either West Wayne Preserve and Friends of Radnor Trail Park. Two point six million, that would wipe out the fund by itself. So. What, what we're presenting here is a spend down to get us to, you know, roughly six hundred and seventy thousand. Over the course of a couple of years. Uh, I, I, I would strongly encourage keeping some cash in the fund uh, for the, the emergency projects that do pop up. Uh, and those are mostly infrastructure related. Uh, and we've seen that, that culverts. They do cost half a million dollars really quickly. So. I think having some amount of money in, in the fund makes sense. Uh, but I do agree that there's no reason to carry this much money when we have this many projects to do. The, the decision is to, to get. You know, which projects do we want to get going on and when?
Some money on the fund is fine, but not three years worth of, of receipts.
Commissioner, um, so in, in a few meetings, uh, I don't know, I don't even know if any of you are on the board other than Commissioner Booker. We presented the Pollution Reduction Plan. As part of our MS four. Uh, five-year program. So that is another item that's going to have to be funded. We'll, we'll go through all those projects again. We'll have Meliora update that, but I. To the manager's point, uh, there will be no problem. In, in, there, there's more projects than there are funds, even, you know, with the borrowings. We, we have a quite a backlog.
Steve, what was the final total for the Robin Hood, that covert, that emergency? I guess collapse. Do you have an idea? So that, and that money was pulled from the fund?
Yes, sir. Um, so that was done in two steps. There was the. Immediate response, which was to stabilize the bank for the house. And I, I'm sorry, I'd have to look that up. And then there's now the, the permanent fix, which we're still considering to be done in an emergency process. If, if the board so, if it so pleases the board and you agree. Uh, as Mr. White said, that was, I think, eight fifty. Less the. Five hundred thousand dollar grant, which net of three fifty. And I believe the other one was in the area of three hundred thousand dollars just to get that. Bank stabilized. So to Mr. White's point. When we have an emergency. Bank stabilized. So to Mr. White's point, when we have an emergency, so. I'm going to go back. So for the past, since the inception of the fund, the stormwater fund, uh, we brought forth various projects to be funded. They're still all out there. In in past budgets, but there is culverts. There's a, there's a lot of things that need to be done. So this is a great start, but I agree with Mr. White. You need to leave that. You need respectfully would need to leave. Funding for those emergencies when they do occur.
Yeah, that was a a pretty emergency. It's a pretty big, uh, sizable chunk. I mean, you're looking at half a million plus. Okay, I just, uh, because, Bill, you said Roberts Road. Did you mean Robin Hood? Or maybe I misheard you. Was there an emergency in Roberts Road?
Yeah, no, there's there. There are two different projects. The Robert Road Culvert we replaced last year. Um, and that was, and Steve, I'll let you fill in any details that I missed, but it basically it was an emergency. It was something that could not wait. Um, the road, the the sidewalls of the road were deteriorating underneath the cars that were driving on them. So we, it was coned off for a period of time. So people didn't lose their tire in there. Um, so that was one that had to be done quickly. Um, so they're they're actually two different projects. We had. Roberts Road, which to the tune of five to six hundred thousand last year, and then Robin Hood on top of that.
Is there a, um, you know, should you put a money away for a rainy day fund, so to speak? Um, like, you know, how we have sewer breaks, but we don't plan for them with all the increase in stormwater. Is there, do you have an estimate of what emergencies we're gonna? Have a year, is it a half a million, a million? Is it, we don't want to plan for it? We will. Because it just seems like, again, getting to Commissioner Booker's point. Um, you don't want to have money sitting idle. Um, but at the. Uh, at the same time, you don't want to have to have an emergency bond or have to wait a couple of weeks to get this fixed. So. I guess I don't know if it's Mr. White or Mr. Nocini. What's what's that balance and what preparation?
Well, I'll I'll start and then Steve, you can fill in. But what what we're built, so basically your rainy day fund. Uh, is going to be the cat, the ending cash balance that you carry in the fund over time. And what we're we're forecasting out is is kind of bottoming out this or. Yeah, bottoming out the spend down to be roughly six hundred and seventy-five, six hundred and eighty thousand. So the rainy day cash in the fund would be about six hundred and eighty thousand as forecasted here. Uh, and that's the money that would be available to fund those emergencies as they come up. Um, what we've seen is that, um, you know, these culverts and and these these emergency jobs that come up. You know, half a million plus or minus is the ballpark. Um, so in any given year, if we needed a half a million, we'd have it immediately available. And then what happens in the subsequent year is the board could say, all right, well, we're going to hold on any improvements the next year to build that. That fund balance back up to a half million to six hundred thousand and then start planning accordingly after that. So that's how you would manage the rainy day.
So to to Mr. White's point, um, and just let's not forget, we had the Shimoney Road Bridge, which failed. And had to be replaced on an emergency basis. Um, so. To Mr. White's point, I agree, about a half million plus is is a good amount to have. But let's look at the Mail and Road Culvert. If the Mail and Road Culvert doesn't get fixed for X years. It could very easily go from planned project to emergency project. And we were looking at one point six million for that, right? So. But to Mr. White's point, a lot of these culverts that are, uh, they're not huge. You easily could spend a half million dollars, six hundred thousand dollars, but. That's a ballpark and that's a guess because you don't know which one's going to go or what event's going to cause one of them to go. Like I say. Mail and Road Bridge, Mail and Road Culvert, if that goes on continually and then we have to close that because it's unsafe, we know we're looking at three times that amount.
Yeah, no, I I I get the ounce of uh, the ounce of prevention and the pound of cure analogy there.
Guys, this was supposed to be a one-hour meeting. We're at an hour twenty. Are there any last questions? Hearing none, I'll look in public.
Oh.
I'll look for public comment and I don't see any. Uh, so I will now call for adjournment. Is there a second?
I get.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.